We're going to open up our January 2nd, 2018 Combined Work Board Meeting. At this time, please silence or shut off your cell phone and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did I say nine?
Yeah.
Yeah. Melody, is there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Uh, no, but Jake Greer would like to make an announcement.
Okay. Good for that, I'll write that down. So first off, welcome everybody. Today is a new chapter in county life. We have two new commissioners on. Welcome, James, Mark, very nice to have you here. Most of us sat through the swearing-in. That's monumental whenever I was elected and so for you guys, I hope you take the pride and come along with the job with that. Years ago, whenever Judge Simpson swore me in and one thing that he stated that I keep very close to my heart is, "You don't only work for the people who voted you in, but you also work for the people that didn't vote for you." So with that said, I've always kept that close to my heart. I'm sure most of you didn't realize that. They represent all of Lake County, not just the people that voted for you. So looking forward to many years of working with you guys. With that, do you have anything to say? If not, we'll get right on with our work session, board meeting. Okay. So the first thing that we have to do before we even get to public comment is to elect a chair and a vice chair. We do that every year. Rotates usually, can or cannot rotate. And all the chairman does is run meetings and there's a few things to sign it. You have no more authority or the last authority as chairman. With that, would entertain a motion for chairman?
I'll make a motion to Brad's chairman.
I'll second that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. So a motion has been made and seconded to appoint me as chairman for another year. Sorry? He's gonna throw the chair at me first thing. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Entertain a motion for vice chair?
It would be vice chair. I nominate James for vice chair.
I'll second that motion. Motion has been made and seconded for James Williams to be vice chair. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, guys. Next item, I'm gonna go with public comment Jake before we go into the announcement. So is there any public comment today?
I just have one comment. Hopefully, one of the two new commissioners. One thing that Ken Kessler was very positive on and very helpful with was pushing for broadband internet and helping us with getting said fiber optics project going in, going into Plush. We're running into some pushback right now with Surprise Valley, who they're trying to attach the fiber optics to their lines, to their poles. We're getting to pushback and stuff on that. This is a over a million dollar project to get this thing going. It'll all be federally funded through E-Rate. If it doesn't get done by July 1, it completely falls through and there is no more funding for this. So right now, from what I understand, we're getting some pushback from Surprise Valley. So hopefully, one of you two will, or Brad, will pick over where Ken left off as far as helping us out and pulling the strings and trying to get things moving with that project. So we can get that fiber optics out to Edala and to Plush.
Well, thank you very much. Yes, after our public comment, we're gonna be doing our liaison, trading those off back and forth and somebody will be stepping up on that.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? There being none, we're gonna move on down. Jake, I'm going to put you.
I just wanted to take a moment. Formerly known as Grady Vandenberg as our new juvenile probation officer. His first day is today. I'll let Grady share a little bit about himself. Because I got short-term memory.
Welcome, Grady.
Thank you. My name's Grady Vandenberg, 24. Lived here my whole life, set aside a couple of years of college. It's a great opportunity for me. I'm happy to have it and I also see it as a big responsibility. And I look forward to learning every day and doing a good job for the kids that need it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Grady. So the board I have on the agenda next due liaisons, we can do those now or we can wait till the end of the meeting? If you'd rather wait till then to. Wait till then? Okay, if we're gonna do liaisons till then?
That'd be great.
Okay. I think that fits very good. All right. Next is the State Safety Committee Representative.
Do you want me to get up?
Yes.
So essentially, essentially what the state needs is we need a representative from the board commissioners. Somebody that will come up and be part of our meeting. We have some funds that we can spend to work on safety within the courthouse and specifically have the passive court upstairs. But we have to have a meeting led by the judge with hopefully a member of 103 on there. So I'm just coming here today to ask one of you to be on that, that board.
Okay. Thank you very much. And when we go through our liaisons, we have a security safety facility committee, we have a county one. I would think that possibly that commissioner would also be the one that sits on the state one also.
It would be good if they worked together. They definitely separate entities, separate meetings, but they are gonna have to work in conjunction to make sure that that's taken care of for the whole county for sure.
Okay. Thank you. Next item, Mental Health Advisory Board Membership Application. We have an application here from Charlie Quake. Doesn't have a whole lot of explanation on here, but as a mental health advisory board, Charlie needs to be put on there as one of the voting members for that. And so apparently, we had missed his application a while back, correct? Yep. So entertain a motion.
On that, Brad, is that gonna be a conflict of interest?
I don't.
As a voting member?
They're, if they're an advisory group to the mental health authority, which we're the mental health authority, and one of us said on that also. And so as an advisory group and whenever there's voting going on, if there is a conflict, then he would need to declare that. But they're advisory, they're not a governing committee. So that's acceptable. I'll make a motion to appoint Charlie Quake to the Mental Health Advisory Committee.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, further discussion?
No.
Did that clarify good enough for both of you?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item, Contract with Goose Lake Rail Connect Project 6, Mr. Berman.
This is just a contract between Goose Lake Railway and Lake County that there are the ones that will be doing the contracts with the bridges with the Connect Oregon grant that we got.
Actually, it's for the ties.
Oh yeah, sorry, yeah. I got two dogs.
Yeah, I knew where you was going. I didn't mean to.
Ties, right. We went to ties and we took over that from our former operators. We took over that grant. So now we're going into contract with Goose Lake Railway to do the construction of the ties. So it's just mainly the actual contract segment. They're responsible for making sure we get that down.
Yeah. The Connect Oregon 6 grant was awarded to a previous operator. When that operator went away, we asked Oregon Transportation Commission for that grant to come to the county. So it came to the county and where it's coming to us, we have to contract with the railway to put the ties in the ground and for the reimbursements to go through there. Put us in compliance with the Connect Oregon grant, which is a state grant, correct? So this, this, the Connect 6 grant's already been accepted and approved. This is a contract between us and Goose Lake Railway.
And these ties are already, they've already put some in the ground already.
Okay. And Mr. Bailey, you reviewed this contract?
Yes, this is just a necessary link in the chain of getting the Connect Oregon money in place for what it's supposed to do.
Would entertain a motion.
I read through it, I didn't really see anything wrong with it.
Make a motion to accept the Lake County Goose Lake Railway Connect 5 Project, 6th Project, sorry.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept the contract between Lake County and Goose Lake Railway being in compliance with Connect 6 grant as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have Nick and Dave, an option, lease option on the county-owned property for community solar. Let Nick go ahead and give an overview of what you got going. Can I see, you've got some things up on there?
So I'm Jake Johnson with Lake County Resources Initiative. One of the projects we're working on right now is a community solar project, which will plan 3 megawatt solar installation that will generate power that will benefit some of the public buildings around Lakeview and planning to try to get the hospitals and schools and some low-income housing units involved in that. So we drafted up this lease option and I think you guys all have a copy and looked at it. So the legal description for the land is on the back page, but I wanted to provide these pictures just so you guys could see where it was. Make sure you don't have confusion about what chunk of land we're looking at trying to lease.
So how does, how does that work as far as, since it's gonna be for the hospital? I think you're gonna go on somebody else's line, right?
It'll be a net metered system, so there's a buyback rate for the power that's gonna be managed or replaced by the state. And I think it's around eight and a half cents right now. It's a pretty new program, so all the questions haven't been answered. So the power is produced, so for example, if the hospital was going to be part of it, they'd buy into X amount of the project. So X amount of power that was produced will benefit them and they're compensated at a rate for that, which per kilowatt or per megawatt.
So how are you gonna do it with low-income housing?
So we're still developing that right now. We recently received about a $10,000 grant to look into that and work with the climate housing authority, set a system for doing that, a billing system and see what, exactly how much power they are using and develop a strategy for getting that involved. So it's still pretty early in the project, we know a lot of unanswered questions, but we're working on figuring it out.
Nick, I believe your math's wrong. I think the line is supposed to be right here. On this side over here, you can get over to where there's, is now where the well and stuff are.
I thought that we wanted.
Isn't that the creek right there?
Yeah, but I think as, just for like the purposes of the lease option, I wanted to include that entire chunk and then as we move forward and if we do actually lease it, we do a property vacation process and then narrow it down to exactly what we have. Does that look right to you or is that?
Well, the city wells are in that one.
Right, here's the city well.
Right.
And so when we talked, it was right, it wouldn't go past the creek. You run into wetland issues and everything here.
Well, that was my mistake then, I outlined it wrong.
Yeah, I think, I think you're still at your 15th side. So just for reference that, that would exclude it from that yellow line. And so this is a lease option, which later on, if developers, everything comes into place, they able to acquire the holdings and all that, then they'd come back with an actual lease to us. With dependent on it's a community solar project, at that time, if it was appropriate, we may lease the property for a rate or not. But this gives time enough for it to have this property so that it can get the investor developers, get the holdings cleaned up and try to pull all the, all the together. The board of commissioners, prior to you guys coming on, agreed to this in essence, told them, "Go ahead, go get the information, you guys will bring it back to us." So the timing happens to be your guys' first day. We could still turn it down, but it's been a process to get here. It's not just a brand new thing. Do you need to add any more to that?
I don't think so. Is there more questions?
I don't have any right at this moment.
Before moving forward with it, I'd just like to make sure that that, that line gets changed.
Okay.
Make sure that that gets corrected.
So it should be, so that's just something that I threw together. That's not the official, the actual legal description is.
They should exclude that, that one, that well there.
Should be, this was agreed to by, or we'll discuss it with the pre-decree commissioners and it was also looked over by your legal counsel? So on lease option itself, it's.
Correct.
And what, what the pre-decree said.
Right. So Mr. Bailey, do you have any comments or any, you've reviewed the lease option that's in draft form. If we make a decision, it would go to an absolute lease option?
Right, a couple of things. This is just a draft, so it has to be changed and the word, the one-on-one draft comes off and of course, the shading comes off. I would point out though, Exhibit A, if you look at it, it has the same area.
It does.
That we were looking at up there, so Exhibit A will have to be changed. So we need to exclude the 269 and 270?
Yeah.
Okay.
269, 270. Because it's on my map too, so.
Right. The only thing this does is it provides the, the other party with the option, the lease option. The lease itself, that should this be exercised, the lease itself would be negotiated in terms of that would be done at that time. So it's a minimal obligation on the one.
One other question. I see the, it shows the water ditch kind of going through, cutting through part of 244. Is that going to cause problems for you? Do you get into wetland issues the same there as you waited over in 269?
We likely would, but the project is only gonna be about 15 acres.
Okay.
So it will be. Could you go to the last? Yeah, the one right there. So I showed the 15 acres, so we're just trying to get the lease option for that whole chunk just so we can move that 15 acres around and get your shapes and needed. Because we are gonna have to try to moldings in there and see which one of the can't find and can't find. So just that's giving us a possibility to shift like the project itself around that.
And for it's investor developers, you have to go through all the regular wetland issue, wildlife issues, cultural issues and everything. So a lot of times on the solar, they carve around those in, or the wetlands and everything is. When you get an investor developer, it puts you down a whole path of compliance thing.
Yes. I have a question.
Yes, Dave.
The plan of access, did you, did we talk about the plan of access, ever you and I? We need a plan of access, how to get to the 15 acres when that time comes?
Is there not an access road?
Well, there is off of Reverta.
Yeah, that's actually a city street because of once that's annexed in and then that main, I may be wrong Dave, but that should have, that existing road that was done during the man camp days, that should be a platted road that's a city road. Since they've annexed in Reverta and annexed that in, so that it should be public access all the way to the back on a platted.
Now you're talking about the one that's, rather than going to the man camp that's paved up and going to use that? What else, how does that ever?
On this, it's New Mexico Avenue is what.
Yeah. Because there is also under-access on the north side of the man camp as well, along the ditch.
Yeah, there's platted, platted roads not built to standards, but there's platted roads here. And I would, I would think probably that other on, with the ditch side would be possibly where they want to take their utility line to get to the substation.
Could you go to the second slide? So the substation is the yellow outline here, just to the right there. And that's what's pretty prohibited through a lot of solar projects like this is the cost of putting it in line from a rig to the substation itself. So this is another reason why this is a least popular.
So we just accept the draft?
Pardon me?
Accept the draft, wanna make a motion to accept the draft?
Okay, so the motion probably should be accept the lease option to be cleaned up so that it doesn't have the draft on it and Exhibit A is correct.
And right to 269, 270? Yeah. 269, 270.
Melody, did you have something?
I gave you a clean-up draft just as we were getting started, but it doesn't have, it's not contingent with the.
Yeah, it's, ah, got it right there.
This one doesn't have draft on it.
So you can approve it subject to the correction of Exhibit A?
Was that your motion, sir?
Yeah.
Was that your second, sir?
Yeah.
Motion's been, motion's been made and seconded to, to accept the option to lease said property continued on Exhibit A being corrected.
So correct that. Yep.
Any further discussion?
So.
All in favor? Thank you. Aye. Thank you, Melody. I didn't see that we have to clean up the version.
One other thing I want to talk to you guys about is we are going to be applying, hopefully applying for a USDA grant to provide technical assistance to local businesses and landowners for people who want to do renewable energy projects. Apparently, we have a pretty experienced renewable energy engineer, Bob Rogers, on LCRI payroll that's funded by another USDA grant. So we're only go for another grant called USDA REDA. I'm not sure if that would be accurate or transparent, but it would provide more funding to keep him around for longer. But we also have to apply for it on behalf of the county. You can't apply for it as a nonprofit. And we applied for it last year and we got turned down, but we were invited to apply for it again this year. And I think, and it's gonna talk a little bit more about it much, much more.
So it'd be, if we're awarded, be a straight pass-through, come to the county, pass straight through. Is there any admin costs or anything with that? Just pass-through, no problem?
I'm not sure yet. We have to look at all of the grant award information when they award it to see what the admin fees could be. We'll discuss that with that.
And it's USDA grant?
Yes, RDA is the program.
R, RDA?
RDA.
RDA?
Yes.
We did apply last year. Jim Walls did an application, we signed off on it, so it's the same, same program as last year.
If you guys want to look at last year's application, we're gonna have to ensure.
So I believe consensus of the board, we could have him go ahead and do the application if it comes through us and handle it. Make sure, very exactly for that. Consensus of the board?
Yep.
Yep. There you go, Nick.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Next up, we have a MOU between VLM and Lake County. We're a cooperating agency with the Bureau of Land Management. I've been attending those meetings. Wilderness characteristics, they have their inventory, they're going through the process of how those lands are gonna be managed. Up until this point, we didn't have the MOU signed, so we need to do that as a cooperating agency and get this back to the VLM. I don't think there's any hurry to get it to them today as they're not working. They're all on furlough. So I bet we do need to get this signed and back to them. So if you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them. The only correction that we've done had under page two, under authority, under two, under see, we haven't put down Lake County Board of Commissioners there.
On page two?
Yeah. Under number two, Roman number two, authority, see.
Gotcha.
Entertain a motion.
So you're saying it on mine, it says the Lake County Board of Commissioners?
Yeah, that's.
I revised it.
You revised it? Oh, I see.
And she checked with VLM to make sure that that's acceptable. And Mr. Bailey had reviewed it. We corrected that and you have one other question?
Yeah, I can't remember what it was at the time. It was just something to correct, it's sort of a scrupulous issue.
Yeah.
But for the two new commissioners, from time to time, we get these, remember having an understanding, which really relate to cooperation. It doesn't bind the county to any particular action and they're, they can be terminated by, by the county just providing notice. So it's really just an understatement, a notation that we are going to cooperate with the VLM.
As a cooperative party?
That's right.
Yeah. The one thing it does, and I have to read back through it, does limit some things that we become aware of here in the cooperating agency that we're working with them. That until you get to in the process, you're not able to disclose certain things that they're in the process of working on. And because they're not public meetings as they're cooperating agency, we said in their meetings.
You're just restricted on passing certain information in those.
Correct.
Yeah.
And I don't know what happened if you do pass on that information.
Well, it's, it's all sorts of the nature of cooperation.
Yeah.
There would be no reason to pass it along, but it's just to make sure it makes clear on that.
That's fine, it looked good to me.
Entertain a motion then?
Yeah. Get back to. I'll second that.
You gotta entertain.
You have to make a motion first.
I'll make that motion and get that back to the VLM.
I second.
Motion's been made and seconded to enter into a memorandum of understanding between the United States Department of Interior and Lake County. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next, we have our annual AOC dues. If you look at the invoice, there's mandatory dues on there. There's AOC general fund dues, $6,260. Public land fund dues of $8,218. Go right on down. You've got the video lottery defense dues, you've got federal land management subcommittee dues, PERS and veteran fund dues. The board prior to you guys, they pay everything except for the federal land subcommittee dues. With Commissioner Shown, Kessler and myself, we believe that where we pay the public land dues, it's almost doubling over.
Yeah.
So there is value to the subcommittee. If we don't pay the dues, we're not a voting member, but we still get representation. I'll recommend that we don't pay the subcommittee dues. Then as you guys go through county college and get your time in with AOC, look next to your recommendation from the two of you that, where you guys get involved at AOC level. So that'd be my recommendation.
I'm hesitant to put any more money to that till I know more about it, so I would, I would second that. I agree until I know more.
So. So I'll make that into motion to pay the AOC dues and not pay the public land fund dues, or not, the federal, federal land management subcommittee dues corrected there. So I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded to pay the AOC dues without joining the subcommittee of federal land management subcommittee dues. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We, we have minutes here of 12:19, Combined Work Regular Session Dues. Legal counsel can guide me, but I believe it's appropriate for you guys to approve those even if you weren't, because it just takes them into official record?
That's right. Typically, what we've done in the past, just as sort of a, the way we've done it, is if you were not at the meeting, then you wouldn't vote to approve the minutes because you weren't there and you couldn't verify, yeah, we see the meeting of the minutes. However, there are certain situations where we have the meeting minutes and. and the necessary commissioner is not present. And in this case, this happened just because it's the end of the year. You are certainly allowed to vote to accept the minutes and you can do that based on another commissioner's representation if they're accurate, so.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of twelve nineteen eighteen combined work, regular session as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye? Aye?
Aye. I said aye.
You said aye? I didn't hear you. Sorry about that. Motion carries. Next, we have Jake Greer, Community Justice Director. This is a department update. Thank you, Jake. And first up, Technical Assistance Summary Report.
Who the board can address though, is on assignments though.
We're gonna do that at the end.
Yeah, okay, good.
Okay. So we should have copies of our Technical Assistance Summary Report?
Yes.
We should have two of them. One says best practices by key component and the other one has some fancy letterhead on it. So we'll address the one that said the best practices, key component first. So back in September, twentieth and twenty-first, we had a group of three come out from National Drug Court Institute to provide a review and audit of our drug court that we started April first of two thousand fifteen. So this is our first formal review that we've had. So looking at the best practices, there's ten best practices, national standards that we have to adhere to. Within those ten standards, there's a lot of underlying components as well. So I'm not gonna go through each and every one, but there's seventy-seven, seventy-seven line items divided within the ten components. There's nine that we receive those on and many of those are beyond our court's control, such as on Page Two at the top, one point eight, tribun court communicates, or tribun communicates with court via email. Judge Nichols has requested no emails. So because we meet in person every two weeks, so that's beyond our control. That's the judge's decision. Three point one, the time between arrest and program entry is fifty days or less. We have no control over that. That's to District Attorney's Office for prosecution purposes. Down to four point three, offers of continuum care of substance abuse, we don't, we don't offer detox, we don't offer residential care in Lake County. Some of that's beyond our control. Looking at the page over to four nineteen, provide jail care, participants are treated on the court. We work with child welfare, so we don't provide that. DHS will provide that if we need our child welfare.
So just a sort of side part of that, because that, that's all inclusive there, what about just during court time, the day of treatment, court?
They have a responsibility to find, provide childcare for their kids. On graduation day, we do allow kids to come, but they sit outside the room until their parent is ready to graduate. Right now, we don't allow kids to court.
Right. So, and we really don't have the place here, but some of them actually do need childcare during treatment four times, no?
They, they find them. They have family members that step up. So some of our participants, their children are older, not in school, some of them in school.
Okay.
Looking at the page to six point three, this is something that we're working on, written copy incentive and sanction guidelines. We're gonna update that. We have that, we just haven't handed it out. Six five and six six have a job being scored involved in some qualifying positive activity. Prior to our work resource program downstairs, we weren't able to mandate employment because some of these folks want to get skills in order to get employed. Now that we have the program, they're doing that. But the research went back to the inception of our, back to the fifteen. So they took all three years, three and a half years to work out. Not just what we're doing now, it's about three years. So that's gonna be yes next time we have the review. And then there's safe and sober housing. It's tough because a lot of our clients, so it's sort of bounce from place to place to place. It could be sober one day, it could be not, it could be a disaster the next night. We have no control of that right now because we don't have any sober housing. But we're working cooperatively possible to create some sober housing.
Good. Just a little update. Eric Smartson and I met last week on a more potential of, where we're in an opportunity zone here for investor developers. I got in with Dave Brown and so they're talking back and forth. So we're all trying, looking forward to someday when we get there, Jake. Appreciate your work on that.
Yeah. And then on the last page, ninety-three, cultural competency training. That's just oversight on my part. So we're gonna be working with Tshus County who has a trainer in cultural competency, having him come down and run us through training. And then ten one, as advisory committee, quid committee member. We had a community member, Kirk Cornliven, he left. But within the last year, he's left the community. So we're still looking for a new community member. We've reached out to folks, but they understand it's a tight commitment and some of them, the folks we've reached out to haven't been able to provide that commitment. So we're still, that's a working process. So that, there's a few things that we have control over. The rest of it, we have more control. Say nine out of about eighty, we're doing pretty good.
It looks pretty good, Jake, especially the ones that you'd have control over, whatever. The courts and others have control over those others.
And then the, the other sheet there, I'm not gonna go through that. That just breaks every key component down. Talks about what we do do and some of the things that we need to do, so that just kind of defines everything on page. You get to page four of eight there at the bottom. Number one, that's part of your recommendations. That's probably what you, that's what we're paying attention to. Everybody on our, part of our court team has a copy of this and we're meeting towards the end of the month to address all these. In the meantime, we have meetings going on with the Columbus Center to address what they can take care of. And we're meeting with the court and the DA's office on what they can take care of. And meanwhile, we're working on our stuff. So we just wanted to provide, we just got this about two weeks ago. So we've had some time to regurgitate it and thought about it and we're gonna continue to.
They sure gave you good kudos, Jake. They gave you good kudos on that back page on six, starting on page six. Looks something to be proud of.
Thank you.
So Jake, here, as you know, very proud of the treatment court. Court's been going for several years and everything. You've, I know the percentage of people that graduate sometimes can be a little bit low, but are we looking like here? We've had several graduate over the years. Do you have any numbers, rough numbers off the top of your head?
I wanna say we have about twenty graduates and we've saved the Department of Corrections instead of sending them to prison because we use this program, remove prison, and the program's excessive complete. At the end of the day, you screw up, you can still go to prison. We've saved Department of Corrections, well over a million dollars a year in prison budget by keeping our clients in the community.
And Department of Corrections is paid for through tax dollars, so it's saving the citizens a little. Absolutely. Very good work.
So the third of us folks that do end up growing up in prison.
And that's the, is that the eleven terminations that you guys have here? This is on the best practices and key components. It lists the nineteen graduates since inception and then it has the eleven termination. Is that what we're looking at?
This is up through September. They came out in September, so we've graduated folks since September.
You've graduated several folks since, yes.
Since September. So we've got more that have graduated. So I'd probably say it's twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four.
Yeah.
So.
Great.
Thank you very much, Jake.
Thank you, Jake.
So moving on down the agenda, going to waive liaisons updates today. I don't think either one of you have any liaisons on updates right now. I'm not moving on any...
Just Jake's.
Well, it's Department liaisons between the three of us. So legal updates for open session.
We have no legal updates for open session unless you want to do the orientation as part of this public meeting.
You know, I think that would be fine. Let's, let's go ahead and do the new commissioner orientation as far as, it doesn't have to be in a public setting, but we might as well. And then after this orientation, we will be going into executive session. Then we'll do liaisons after executive session.
So what I gave you is just the point that goes over and this is really just an overview in all these areas. So ask questions as you like, but this will sort of unfold as you become more familiar with your role as commissioners. So starting with the first is general description of my role. My role is provide legal advice to the county on any issues that come up that are not a criminal matter. That's the responsibility of the DA. I also provide litigation coverage for the county in matters that are outside insurance coverage. So we have city, county, insurance, anything that is under their policy, they have outside counsel that will come in and represent the county in defense of those claims. As a result, litigation on my part would be if the county is the plaintiff, being the party that is suing someone for some reason or some, another party, or if it happens to fall outside of insurance coverage, which is a pretty narrow area. Last year, we had litigation that was eventually dropped that was asking that the county produce records. It was kind of a, I don't know why, it was filed because everything is a public record and they could just get the public records. But for whatever reason, the individual filed that, so I took care of that because that was not part of what is covered by insurance. Otherwise, my role is, in terms of the nature of it, I try to be as close as possible to having an office down the hall. So the idea is ideally you would have someone local who handles this, but the county being as small as it is, Lakeview being as small as it is, legal counsel typically would run into conflicts of interest almost routinely. So the value of having someone outside the area, whether it's in Bend, and prior to me, it was in Clanton Falls, is that we don't have those problems. But what I try to do is provide a service that is the same as though I had an office in the building and you could get to me at any time. So the goal is to provide you with an answer within 24 hours if it's at all possible. And my aim is to give an answer as soon as I possibly can and not worry about the 24 hours. But if I can give you an answer at any time, I'll do that. So that's my, that's the general description of my role. Any questions about that? Or Brad, do you think there's anything else I need to fill in?
Just a comment, as you represent us, you also represent us in a land use suit here, just the local one.
Oh, yeah.
So it just depends on which you'd come forward, for Mr. Bailey or other insurance.
Right. So in that case, it was land use, but I also represent the county in negotiations. So that's coming up every three years.
And they're up right now.
Yeah, I was wondering about that this morning, when I thought that was this year. So number two, department head access. What we do is this, is department heads can contact me freely, but folks who are within the department don't contact me. They go through their department head if there is an issue and then I respond to the department heads whenever they have a question. So it's an open access thing, role as well as to the board. Moving on to operations of the board, some of this you probably already know. Decisions are made by a majority of the board in public meetings. The decision can be by a formal vote, which is what you did today, motion and vote on those things, or it can be by consensus or something that's not really a formal item. Usually it's to proceed or to give someone direction to proceed as they have been doing. So it doesn't require a formal vote if you're moving by consensus, but consensus is only used for those things that are, I guess I would say lesser importance, rather than taking the formal vote and proceeding with the law directly. Quorum of the board is two. The importance of that is if any two of you are talking about something involving the county, it's possible that that conversation would trigger a public meeting, even though you had not announced it or had not intended to do that. The simplest way to think of it this way is it's one thing to just pass each other in the hall and say, hi, how was your weekend? That's not a public meeting. It's not county business. Saying something like, wow, that meeting was far more contentious than I thought it would be, that's not a public meeting. You're just commenting on something. If you're talking in a way that is moving toward reaching a decision, then that is certainly gonna trigger a public meeting and you would wanna hold off on that. Comments like, I was surprised by your vote today. I didn't realize you felt that way. Again, that's not a public meeting. That's just sort of an informal comment. But the closer you get to talking about operations of the county that require a decision, that's when you'll want to be more careful about triggering a public meeting. Typically, it's not a problem because, you know, you have to have conversations. And so you have to walk on eggshells, but if you feel like, okay, this is getting kind of involved, then it's better to opt for having a public meeting. Brad, you could probably speak a little bit to that because you've been in situation directly, so.
Yeah, you, you know, you, you can't operate without visiting. If you start deliberating for a decision, one of the two of you have to say, you know, this, this is outside the scope where we need to be visiting and just shut it down. And, and it actually becomes fairly easy. I'm, myself, we travel together to different things, meetings, we meet quarterly and everything. That doesn't constitute a public meeting. You're, you're able to do that as long as you keep your conversations limited. And so you can, can get pushed into accidentally, you know, it's normal to wanna talk about your day's worth of work, but each one of us just have to say, you know, we need to wait and have that conversation work session or something.
Number five talks about public records. Anything that you get is a public record. Someone comes to you and says, okay, I'm giving to you, giving this to you in confidence, it's not in confidence. Everything that comes to the board, it's a business that we do, is all open to the public. And so anything that you get that someone sends to you, whether it's just like I gave the sheet to you, or if someone gives you a note or sends you something in the mail, or you get an email, those are all public records and they have to be preserved. Cell phone, anything that comes on a text, you have cell phones protecting county business on those. So be aware that anything that you text in those is subject to public meeting law and eventually could be discovered should there be a lawsuit. So don't think that you can avoid it that way. Even if you use your private phone for something like that, if it's county business, then eventually that can be discovered should it be part of a lawsuit. So just be attentive to that. And again, if you have any questions about anything like that, then you contact me and say, tell me what I should do in this and where I should go. Okay? Areas of board decision making. You have three types, ordinances, orders and resolutions. When we get to those, we can talk some more about them, but ordinances are passing laws on the, on the part of the county. Orders are decisions that are made in a quasi judicial fashion. Something will come before the board that requires a board decision. You take facts, you listen to some testimony, you get other information, and then you make a decision that decides the matter. That's what an order is. A resolution typically has no binding effect. Now, if it has a binding effect, that's gonna be an order or an ordinance. A resolution announces the position of the board as the governing body of Lake County. And that could be on anything at all, you know, to, from commemorations to recognition of someone's service to things like that. Those tend to be things that are simply acknowledgements, a formal acknowledgement on the part of the board representing the county.
Probably a little more in depth on orders. Like I guess the best example is, is if there's a land use appeal to the Board of Commissioners, we then become probably judicial. We cannot have no discussion with anybody other than our staff. And if we do, when that hearing starts, it takes two hearings, we have to disclose that because of it's being appealed to us before it can be appealed on up to the state. And that was one of the first places I, as a new commissioner, I sort of got caught on land use. And then it was appealed. Once it's appealed, we don't talk to nobody about it except for our staff.
Right. That's a, that's a very good point. You can, you know, commissioners typically have an open door. You can, you know, commissioners typically have an open door, and members of the public come in and say, "I want to talk to you about this issue or that issue," and you sit and listen to them, and you know, it may end up coming as a matter before the board in the regular course of business. If, to use the example of a land use decision, that same person comes in or in the same conversation says, "Oh, by the way, you're going to be deciding on this," that's when you have to go, "Whoa, whoa, that is a quasi judicial," and so you have to stop the conversation there. If you get deep into the conversation, realize, "Oh, my goodness, we kind of drifted into that," then we come in to make the decision or have the hearing, that's when you disclose, "Charlie came to me, we were talking about such and such, you drifted into this, so we did cover that, but then I stopped it, and now everybody knows that I did get additional information." That allows the other party, if they wanted to, to say, "Well, since Charlie told you about that, we're going to tell you now about X." So, it balances everything out, and nothing is done behind closed doors. Conflicts of interest.
I want to go back to six to make sure I'm correct, there's areas of board decision making, contracts and improvement of contracts that have a financial obligation to the county are done by the board of commissioners in public meetings. I believe some department heads sign a few contracts, I'm not sure that they've been able to do that, but a little overview of obligation of the county under contractual obligations, our role as board commissioners.
Right, contracts are just part of doing business, and the way the county does business is by the board of commissioners and a majority vote. So, we will frequently have contracts that come before the board, the party or the department that is presenting the contract will describe what its nature is, and typically you'll cover that in a work session, and then when we have our public meeting to formally adopt it, that's where the individual will typically be here, like you saw today with Dave Berman, and you'll get an explanation of it primarily for the public, because you will have already covered it typically in detail in a work session, and then you'll make your decision in an open meeting regarding that, and that's by motion, second, and majority vote.
Yeah, so if, if a department head or elected official goes out and signs that parameter, they're signing the contract on their own behalf, and then that does, that's just a little overview because that has happened in the past and it can happen.
The board can authorize the department head to sign a contract, because that is an element of agency. You are designating them as an agent of the county to enter into the contract, but the board is the body that makes the decision as to whether or not to enter into a contract. If a department head signs a contract without board approval, that will create a problem for us, because the other party who has signed the contract will have assumed that the department head has authority. And then we get into a gray area of, was that a reasonable assumption on apparent authority of the department head? So, making clear to the department heads, the contract has to come before the board. If they don't do that without authorization, then they're acting outside of their authority. They're limited in that, but like I said, sometimes if it's not really clear, then an outside party can assume, "Well, but Commissioner Winters is the chair of the board, he signed this." It's like, well, yeah, but the board has to vote on it, and the board didn't vote on it. That party can come into court and say, "I had every reason to believe that Commissioner Winters had full authority to sign this." That's different if it comes in, "Well, no, you were there at the meeting, and it was voted down, and then you asked Commissioner Winters to sign it, and he didn't know what he was signing, that we can void that contract, or the contract has no legal enforcement." So, that's the way it goes. So, just think of it as, board makes all the decisions and can authorize agents, which are typically department heads. Conflicts of interest. There are two types of conflict of interest, one is actual and one is potential. It gets very difficult to go through the details of what can constitute a conflict of interest. The simplest way to think of it is this way. If you or an immediate family member will benefit or be negatively affected by a board decision, then that is a conflict of interest. Each individual situation, if you're concerned about, you should contact me and we'll look through the details. But just think of it that way. If you or a family member will benefit, that's typically what happens, or will be negatively affected, then check with me and we'll find out. Actual conflicts of interest have to be declared, and you have to abstain from the vote. For example, we have, we often are called, often required to approve liquor licenses. If a relative, say, your son, I don't know about your family at all, say your son has applied for a liquor license, you would have to abstain from that vote, because you'd have an immediate family member who would benefit from the approval of that. If your son was thinking about buying a place and would eventually apply for a liquor license, but hasn't done so yet, and there's something involving the sighting, the business, or something like that, then that's a potential conflict of interest. It hasn't happened yet, and you would disclose that, so everybody knows that there was a role, that you had involvement there, so everything's out in the open. There are very rare situations where you can vote even when you have a conflict of interest, and that's simply in situations where we need to take a vote and we require the vote of a commissioner, say we lack a quorum unless we have an out of two, one person has a conflict of interest, but we have to move forward on this vote. Then it's declared that there's a conflict of interest and a vote can be taken, but that's never come up in the 15 years that I've worked here, and I can't think of a situation that would be so pressing that we would have to move forward that day on any particular issue, right as possible. Moving on, but again, just in terms of conflict of interest, if it's a benefit or a loss to you or a family member, that's when the alarm should go off, and then we should just talk about it.
And there's a definition of family member, how far it goes down?
Yeah, it's, I say immediate family member, so I can just run through it, so you know, it's you, wife, stepchildren, children, parents, and that's really where it ends. You can imagine that as we start to, as you go farther out in the family, you can end up with potential conflicts of interest due to their involvement, how might affect you or another family member, and so we have sort of a gray area around immediate family. So, it's always good to talk, so we can figure out whether or not there's a problem, and whether it's an actual or just potential. With regard to gifts, the simple rule is that in any one year, you cannot accept more than $50 in value from any one individual, organization, group, party, interest minimizes the potential for improper influence. It applies in any one year, so if you're, if you're going to get anything of value, including things like, you want to be paid to give a speech or a presentation, then contact me about it and we can walk through it. Having your expenses paid is not a gift, so, but again, anytime you're getting anything, it's probably best to talk to me about it before we have a problem. Gifts are anything that are not available to the entire county. For example, every year, I give cookies to the people of Lake County. I leave them here in this building where they are displayed, and who grabs the most of them, I don't know, but this is not a gift to the commissioners, it's a gift to the people of Lake County, and I put it in the commissioners' charge to present as a wish. That's a good example of not being a gift, but it's something that the board is certainly entitled to indulge themselves with the cookies, because it's available to everyone. Use another example, if you have a lottery ticket and you win the lottery, two things happen. One, it does not trigger the gift definition, because anybody can play the lottery, you just happen to play the lottery. The second thing it triggers is probably your resignation the following day and you move on.
So, just because you brought up lottery, and you see across people jointly buy lottery tickets, if that's done among county employees and the commissioner's part of that and they won, what would that, that's funny?
That shouldn't be a problem, because participation in lottery is available to everyone.
Okay.
So, and this goes also back to conflict of interest. Any vote that you take technically would be a conflict of interest, because it's going to negatively affect or positively affect your or a family member. Conflicts of interest only exist when that benefit or that negative effect runs to that individual. So, you can take votes on issues that generally affect the community, and that is not a conflict of interest similar to gifts. Personal liability, this rarely comes up, but it's possible, if we go back to the example I've used, of a board member signing something they should not sign, because they don't have the authority to do it. As I said, board interests into, the county enters into contracts based on a board vote. If any one of you sign a contract without a board vote, the other party might be able to rely on that on a reasonable basis, thinking that you had authority to sign it, but that would create personal liability on your part, because you did not have the authority to do that. So, you want to be very careful in terms of signing anything. Other part of personal liability is, anything that you do in your official capacity will not create personal liability. You simply have to be careful about, well, is what I am doing now, or the action that I'm taking, actually county business, or is it my personal business, my personal representation? That's where the line comes down. So, if you have any concern about that, again, call me, explain it to me, and we'll decide, okay, here's how we can go about doing it, or here's how we have to be very careful about it. Did you have a specific?
I don't on personal liability, I just, one of the things, right, came on, made me very nervous. If you stay within the parameters of what you're elected to do, you're covered.
Yes.
You go outside those parameters, and it's not too hard to figure that out. If it doesn't feel right, don't do it. If you have a question about it, go to hold the legal counsel. But, that's a part of our, our exposure that has always made me nervous myself, but it's pretty easy to stay within the confines of what our duties are.
Yeah, I guess the other thing that I would advise is if, remember the public comes to you and is talking to you in your office about any particular issue, that you don't say anything that sounds like you made a decision on the issue. You know, "I'll take care of that, okay, I'll handle that." Just say, "Okay, I'll bring this up to the board, and I'll put it on the agenda." That's the simplest way to do it. You know, "I fear you, I understand," that's not a problem, but the situation, like, "Okay, I think it's worth bringing up, I can put it on the agenda, how about that?"
Target it to the department head that handles it and let it go through the process.
Very good, exactly. Number 10, you do not have the authority, individual authority to hire or fire. This is just like a contract. You can't enter into a contract on behalf of the county, you can't take action on behalf of the county, because we have county employees. On top of that, many of the county employees are union employees, and so we have contract obligations running to the union that protect those employees and provide them certain rights. So, you can't hire or fire, and it's just, you know, be attentive to that in dealing with someone. Now, if you have personnel issues, then we deal with those as they come up. Those don't come up often, but sometimes they do, and then I talk with the board, usually in executive session, because it's the potential for litigation, and I'll talk about that later. But, we cover that as we go forward. Sometimes it's a union issue, and we bring the union in and address it through the union
We could, we could pretty much just recommend who gets fired, right?
As strongly as you like.
So, the board of commissioners, we do all the hiring of the department heads, and we run interviews, and the board hires all the department heads. We do the review of the department heads and everything at the board.
I would just be...
Well, I know you are, but I'm being serious, because I think I might agree that you, there's somebody we need to review.
Charlie?
Right away, Jake.
We're approved of your county. By the way, we are.
Moving on to number 11, public bid exemption rules. Almost every contract that we put out is subject to being put out to public bid, so that you don't do, the whole idea is that the county or the government doesn't do side businesses with favorite companies. So, we will put it out for public bid, and there are requirements for that, and that's where we do most of our business. We do have a set of exemptions to public bid, all of which require that if we're going to do this exemption, we have looked at it and it's not going to undermine the idea of competitive bidding, and it will save the county money. So, we have exemptions to those, but typically, we do it all by public bid, but we have numerous exemptions from that, as long as the public bid process is protected and is not undermined by the fact that, for example, there's a single source, where there's no public bid to go out, because there's only one party that's selling it. So, that's an exemption to the rules, and we would follow that, because it will not undermine public bidding. One quick word on relationship with other elected officials. While most department heads are elected, there are a few that are, and so our relationship with them is different. I don't know that the working relationship is that different, but they're, the nature of their position is different, and so it simply has to be taken into effect, taken into consideration in dealing with them. The sheriff and the DA, because they involve criminal matters, are the ones where this comes up the most. These are issues that are very important to the public, and those individuals, the sheriff and the DA, are dealing directly in situations that, as you can imagine, can be extraordinarily sensitive, and so often, we will interact with the DA or the sheriff in those matters, that don't necessarily involve an individual, but may involve procedures and operations. And so, we'll deal with them. They have an autonomy by nature of their office that is different from being a department head, and so that, as an elected official, we deal with them slightly differently than we would with a normal department head. With regard to the DA, there's another overlay to that, and that is the DA is a state employee. They're elected, but they're not a county employee. Everyone who works in their office is a county employee, so we often, or often, but there is the potential, and it's come up in a little bit in little tiny ways, where we have a state official, but we're providing the resources for that office, and so we have county influence in terms of the finances of the office and the staffing of the office, and how they conduct themselves, but the DA, as a state elected official, runs that office. So, occasionally, there's a bump, but it's just the fact that they are elected and from the state. Last four, open session is...
I want to talk a little, on the elected officials, it's the sheriff, the DA, the clerk, treasurer, surveyor, and assessor, just to sort of straightforward. We're equal, we can't give direction to them. So, that, that's the uniqueness of elected officials. Most all elected officials are real receptive to where we're at, what we do and everything. The one thing, us, we do control all the budgeting, and so there has been cases, not at Lake County, but other places, where they've had an elected official go rogue, and they've just, the only control the commissioners have is to cut the budget. And so, just sort of put that out there, hard and fast, that's our only role, if we have an elected official that's going opposite of the administration of the county, is the way we're looking forward to go.
And to follow on with that, there are instances, as you can imagine, where there's a lot of interaction between the department heads and the board. The treasurer, of course, works for the board in setting the budget, the treasurer's an elected official. The county clerk certifies elections, the county clerk also will certify decisions that are put to popular vote. A couple of years ago, we had a question about marijuana sales in Lake County, and we had an ordinance, so the individual, maybe the voters, adopt the ordinance, and then we put it into practice as a particular ordinance of the county. So the individual, I mean, the voters adopt the ordinance and then we put it into practice as a particular ordinance of the county. But that involves going from the county clerk to the board. So those interactions occur mostly of, well, I would say entirely on a cooperative basis, just getting business, getting careful. Finally, executive session. There are a few things that the board will discuss, but never makes a decision in the executive session and it's due to the sensitivity of the subject. The ones that come up most often are ongoing or potential litigation. You don't want to be discussing potential county liability in open session for, I think, for pretty obvious reasons. So you would discuss that with me in the executive session. Executive session, we adjourn the regular session. We go into executive session. We talk and discuss whatever the matter is. And then we come out of executive session and no decisions are made. But you might then immediately make a decision based on the information that came to you in executive session. The other area for executive session are union negotiations. Obviously, we can't actually negotiate with any party if those negotiations and our discussions on how we're going to approach things is done in an open session. Similar thing for, we'll say negotiations to purchase for Solane. We can talk about that in the executive session just due to the nature of the subject. So typically, as I said, what we do is we go into executive session under development subheading. And then we clearly run for, for everyone except the press. The press can stay, but they're not allowed to reveal anything that's discussed in executive session. And certain county department heads would be allowed to remain because they have information that's relevant to the discussion in executive session. We don't keep detailed minutes of executive session. There's no recording of the executive session. But we do note the subject matter so that everyone knows what was discussed. And occasionally, I would say, okay, we're kind of drifting off of the subject and we can't discuss that, so.
If we drift off the subject, then the press can comment publicly on that, correct? If it's not the subject we went in there for?
No, no, it's executive session, so they can't comment on anything that comes up in the executive session. The trick would be, and that's my role, is to make sure that we don't go too far in that kind of direction. Because if we do that, then we're violating the executive session rules. The interesting thing about the press is that while they aren't gagged, there is no penalty if they reveal what they heard in the executive session. Except for the fact they lose total credibility with the board and we would be watching what we say about discussing with them at any time. So in fact, including, I forget to come back to future meetings. It creates a real mess. We've never had that problem. But I think, to follow up on your question, if we started in the executive session talking about litigation and we left that really quickly and we talked about whether or not we wanted to fire a particular department head. There are rules we have to follow for that and we don't. And we have this hour-long discussion. The press would have to make a decision, talking to their own legal counsel, as to whether or not they should say, this occurred in executive session and the commissioners clearly were violating executive session rules. Counsel never stopped them. We feel it's our obligation as the press to report this. I would hope that it would never, ever go that far. And that would be my job to prevent that, so. With that, is there anything else?
I, no, I think unless Mark or James have questions at this point, they're both committed to county college, which will reassure a lot of these things and indicate law dis through the county college side of it. And you already have the new commissioners' orientations where you can see much covered, quite business, I believe.
Now, but some, it's great your hat's it.
Oh, absolutely. And if it comes up, give me a call, send me an email.
Are you going to be around here for the law debate or are you headed back up?
Well, if it's a debate, I go as soon as we're finished, so. If you want to talk to me about something, I'll have to have this here.
Yeah, I'd love to talk to you.
Absolutely.
You're going to be around, yeah.
That's everything we have for open session legal update.
Okay, so what I'm going to do is we're going to take about a 10-minute break and then we're going to come back and go right into executive session. I would like to hold off on leaving until after executive session so everybody knows what's going on there. So we'll take recess until 25 minutes after 11:00.